Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our August 28, 2024, Downers Grove Library Board of Trustees meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the federal government of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. I just want to take a moment to thank you all for bearing with us for the past few months as we've shifted our meeting location, but want to welcome you to what will be our permanent home in the Betty Cheever Council chambers, and want to thank all of the village staff for helping us with this transition. Very beautiful facility. Caitlin, can you proceed at the roll call?
Trustee Doherty?
Here.
Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Sleda?
Here.
Trustee Topic?
President Gagani?
Here.
All right, item number four of our agenda is approval of minutes from July 24, 2024. I will move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and all those abstaining.
Aye.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Item number five is financial matters. We have the July 2024 financial report and the August 2024 invoices.
All right, so we are 58.3% through the year as of the end of July. So you all have seen that in your packets. As of the end of July, we have collected 54.1% of our revenues. As you know, our September-October property tax payment allocations will bring us probably over 100% when we receive those second property tax payments. We are at 51.9% expended for the year to this point. Some of the outliers in our budget are 5303 with his conferences, seminars, and meetings, which has been spent at 70%. That is due to the national conferences that occurred in March and July that we had staff go to, so we are a little bit ahead on that line. Again, 5323 special legal is at 218% expended, and that is due to our legal expenses around our FOIA and OMA challenges. And 5420 is insurance other policies. That is at over 90% expended. Those are annual premiums that are paid in January. And then you will also see that 5770 and 5870, those are capital expenditures under $20,000 and capital expenditures over $20,000 respectively. The capital expenditures under 20 will go over budget because some items that we expected to come in, in the over category, actually came in under. This includes our meeting room chairs, which we expected to be our largest furniture purchase of this year. We expected to pay in excess of $35,000 for those chairs. Thanks to our building operations director, Ian Noor, finding us a really great deal on chairs, we will be spending about $15,000 on chairs, so they will be going into the other line. So those will definitely offset, and we do actually expect in aggregate to come in significantly under budget on those capitals. Any other questions for me?
I'll move to approve the financial matters as presented.
I will second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial matters as presented. Let's go ahead and proceed at the roll call.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sleda?
Yes.
Trustee Topic?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
All right, wonderful, the financial matters have been approved as presented. Item number six is public comment. I'll go through the rules real quick. Before I open the floor to public comment, just want to review a few things. The public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. The public comment portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. As usual, we will evaluate this at the 30-minute mark and extend time if we feel it is needed. Speakers are asked to limit comments to three minutes, but the maximum is five minutes. If you are representing a group, please limit your limits comments to one speaker for your whole group. If a member of the public goes over the time limit, I'll motion for a five-minute recess. We'll continue with public comment after the recess, and if we run into more issues, then we will go ahead and end the public comment portion of this meeting. And please refrain from applauding, heckling, and side conversations, and just show respect for one another. That being said, we'll open up the floor.
I guess I'm first. My name is Bruce Mayby. I've lived and worked in Downers Grove for 50 years now, and I just want to point out that's just before Betty Cheever became mayor. I started coming to these meetings at the beginning of this year when I saw controversy going on, important controversy. In fact, controversy not limited to Downers Grove, but which is going on all over the country and farther too. Right now, I want to thank each of you for not just taking on the controversy, but getting into it, and each in a different way. Each of you has been getting into these controversies in different ways. Tonight, I especially want to thank Carissa Doherty, in case this is her last meeting on the board. I just want to focus on the fact that she has really put up some strategic questions, some very important questions. Not only that, but went out to other libraries and a number of other things to begin getting some grounding, getting some beginnings of answers to some of the important questions that all of you have to deal with. And then I just want to put out one more thank you, and that's for continuing to move it forward. I don't expect it to be uncontroversial, I expect it to be maybe more controversial, but I thank you for, again, not just taking it on, but digging in as you go forward.
Good evening, Werner Kuntia. I'm a resident of Downers Grove. I've got some more thank yous, and I also want to say thank you to Carissa for your service and all of the things that you've done in terms of the library and the residents of Downers Grove. In a little while, we're going to be hearing about the direct services provided by the library's social workers. I laud the library and the staff for providing these services. Thank you. The reason the library provides these services is due to a lack of services by tax-funded departments in DuPage County. Rather than discussing the merits of whether the library should hire a social worker, let's go to the village council as residents of DuPage and also Downers Grove and ask them to join with other communities to address the needs in the communities with the Health Department. We're talking about people who have needs just like you and I, but some of these people require help, as each of us may do in our lives also. The other day, I was going down Saratoga, and the food pantry is up by Ogden Avenue. There was a line outside the door for people who were asking for assistance. Affordable housing in this community is also something that's lacking, and sometimes what we do is we laud certain individuals or groups of people. So for example, for the Grand Master for our Fourth of July Parade, we had an individual who apparently was disabled and also works with a group of women who have disabilities. What I was wondering when we looked at her as the master of ceremonies for the Fourth of July Parade, we said, look at us, we are honoring this person, but we would be honoring this person if we would provide affordable housing and services to the needs that this individual represents. So in essence, let us all work on providing the assistance to persons in need in our community and also address this to the village council. In closing, I laud the library for addressing this need. Hopefully, the day will come when the village and the county provides the needed services. Thank you to all of you.
Good evening. Eileen Brainerd, a resident. Thank you, Carissa, for your years of service here on the board. Tonight, I'd like to remind the board that you represent the residents of Downers Grove. You've spent much time and money gathering input as to what the public wants at the library. I ask you now to follow that directive. In the Rethinking Libraries paperwork, 46 people said stay out of social services. 18 were pro-library social services, and six said collaborate with the village. That's 52 against a library social worker to 18, 41. That's almost three to one against a social worker. The public does not want a social worker at the library. I ask you to follow that directive. I recently heard Werner Kunti speak at a village council meeting where he said he worked as a social worker and was responsible for a population of 100,000 people. Well, by that standard, we do not need two social workers in the village of Downers Grove, which has a population of about 50,000 people with 20,000 households. We pay for one social worker already. That's sufficient. The library could look into collaborating with the village on the use of that social worker. Remember, you work for the residents of Downers Grove, not the director of the library, or the friends of the library, or the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation, or any other employee of the library. Please listen to the opinions of the residents that you so ardently pursued.
Good evening. Ed Brainerd, resident. Clarissa, thank you. Again, you've done a great job. We'll miss you. Tonight's topic, children's safety in the Downers Library, or lack thereof. Since Ms. Milovic, the library director, has chosen to bury the library incident reports, these reports are problems within the library which require library staff or the Downers Grove Police Department to come and resolve a serious situation within the library which might cause harm to patrons. She buries these reports on the library website within the library trustee board packets each month, where they are almost impossible to find. In August, the incident reports are found starting on page 33 of 155 pages, rather than possibly including the incident reports each month, say, in the library's discovery newsletter. So because of this failure to communicate, and since donors' moms think their kids are safe in the library, here's an incident update of some of the highlights, or lowlights, May to date. Intoxication, two separate incidents, fighting, battery, physical attacks, individuals viewing porn, theft, vandalism, threats to patrons. For example, an individual yelled out, "All white women are the devil, and all of them should be dead." Disruptive behavior, harassment, swearing, banned individuals continuing to re-enter the library, multiple offenses here. Totals, May through August, serious incident reports, 19. Police visits required, 16. This is outrageous and unsafe for our children. In my opinion, this should call for the Downers Grove Police Presence in our library. Note, the library has an annual budget of $6 million, so don't say money would be a big issue, and I'm sure you could work out an arrangement with the village and the police department to do this. Now, I'm sure there are fewer than maybe one in 100 moms or patrons in the village who knows where to find the incident reports on the library website. Where's the transparency? The incident reports should be included in the library's discovery newsletter each month, listing the number of incidents and the number of police visits. Then clearly explain how to find the incident report detail on your website. Better yet, would be to have a distinct, separate tab on the library website for the incident reports. Let's be 100% transparent. Tonight, Ms. Milovic needs to explain why she buries the incident reports in the board packets rather than transparently in the discovery's newsletter or some other prominent place on the website, and explain how moms and other patrons might find the incident reports, and explain why there is no police presence in the library, and why she refuses to add any further security to protect our children. Children's safety within our library is the number-one responsibility for the library, the director, and the Board of Trustees. All are failing at this responsibility to date.
Do we have any other comments? All right, thank you all very much. We will move on to our next item of business, which is trustee comments.
I just want to add my thanks to Carissa for always keeping a cool head and teaching us some good analytical skills in the process. You will be missed. Stay in touch.
I'll go next. I have just a really few comments. First, I wanted to do a shout-out to Tricia Thompson, a staff member who was named one of the, I'll make sure I get this right, in Emerging Leaders Magazine as a training, emerging training?
Training magazine.
Training magazine as an emerging leader. Huge. To Alessa, a staff member who was able to help a patron who spoke Russian, and Alessa speaks Ukrainian, and they were able to help this patron. It is exactly the sign of a welcoming community that we are trying to be for inviting a patron in who is now going to be a repeat visitor at the library because they felt welcomed, they were invited in, they had someone they could speak to, they got a library card, all the things that a library is supposed to be. That interaction is exactly like the definition of a perfect situation, so I wanted to point that out. The new little reading nook, I was able to observe it a few times. First, a mom and a daughter reading a book, then an older sibling helping a younger sibling, like, do homework, and then a toddler trying to climb in with their book that was larger than them. So three times I was in the library, and the toddler was the cutest because literally this book was like, like, all you could see was their eyes, and they were trying to climb up into it. Really, really cute. Carissa, thank you. I have learned, I have grown, I have no, there's so many words that I, that you were so opposite for me because I'm like this, and you're like this, and it's awesome, and I appreciate you more than I could say. Yeah, that's really all I have to say today.
I'll add to the thank yous to Carissa. I'm not sure I was this, but I'm not the analyst that she is either. She did the analytical work and held our feet to the fire until we understood it. And we didn't always agree, but we always learned from Carissa, so thank you so much. We'll miss you. She's not necessarily, she'll serve until replaced, I think, on the board, but this, depending on the actions of the village council, this could be her last meeting, so thank you very much. I'd like to comment on just a couple of other things. First of all, Barnali mentioned two staff members, Tricia Thompson from Training Magazine. She is the, one of the magazine's 2024 Emerging Training Leaders nationwide, and that's another indication of the quality of our people. Alessa helped out a family who had just moved here from Ukraine, a family with young children. They were trying to get, figure out what kind of school supplies and things they would need since school was just beginning, and they were overwhelmed, and they came to the library for help, and Alessa asked her, "Do you speak Russian?" And she said, "Oh, yes." And so they immediately bonded, and Alessa was able to help her and went so far as to give this woman her work schedule so that they would know, "If you come to the library during these times, you'll find me, and I can continue to help you." And that again, we could give a word to almost all, maybe I'll take the word "almost" out of that sentence, to all of the employees, the team members of the Downers Grove Public Library, but this is just two examples of what they do. And I was also interested to see some of the statistics for this year. For example, there were, so far this year, 22,196 kids attending programs at the Downers Grove Public Library. That's quite a few more. That was something like 18,000 people last year, kids, so these numbers are up. And if you look at the statistics, all the numbers are up, programs, all ages for programs, everything is up. Our staff is accommodating that, but they're working harder every year in order to meet the demand from our community for library programming and services, so I, again, want to thank them for that.
I'll just add my thanks to the staff and to Carissa also. I don't have anything else to add.
I'm not going to say much because, well, comparatively speaking.
Be analytical.
Well, yeah, well, I do have a spot toward the end of the meeting to talk a little bit more about some of this other stuff, but I also wanted to give a quick shout-out to Tricia Thompson. I have a special place in my heart for people that work behind the scenes and do process improvements and training, so I thought that was pretty cool, the award or the recognition that she received. I also want a nook huddle pod for my wife because that sounds, I haven't seen it in person, but the picture that was shared, I was like, wow, that's amazing, I want one of those. So as others have mentioned, I think this might be my last meeting unless the council doesn't approve someone by September, and then I'll continue serving until there's someone else in the seat. But I wanted to take a few minutes to thank you and express my appreciation for the opportunity that I've had to serve this library and this community. I'm especially grateful to the staff and my fellow trustees, and to all the folks, you all and those who are not here tonight that have participated in our meetings over the last six years. Julie, Jen, Caitlin, you've been amazing leaders and administrators, helping provide us with the information that we need to do our jobs while also doing your very challenging jobs, and that you do it with professionalism and with good humor, maybe serving on the board a true pleasure. Dave, Swapna, Barnali, Marty, and Matt, I've enjoyed getting to know you through celebrations and crises, and I look forward to seeing how you'll help the library evolve in the next several years. Swapna, I want to thank you in particular, and express my admiration for your organization and your clear-headed leadership for the last two years. It's really impressive. And to all the members of the public, again, those of you who are here tonight and those who are watching from home eventually from our YouTube channel, I've learned a lot from you too, and that's really helped shape my perspectives on public service, on governance, our community in Downers Grove specifically, and the role of libraries and in society more generally. I'm leaving this seat just as curious and only marginally less idealistic than I was when I started. I hope to continue working to improve information literacy, it's a passion that I discovered while I was on this board, and finding ways to make our civic discourse less polarizing and more empathetic, more respectful, and inclusive. I'm not going away completely. I will, you'll certainly see me from time to time out there on the other side of the table, and I'm looking forward to continued conversations about the future of the library. Thanks again. I'm really grateful for this incredible learning experience. Just stay curious.
I should have had you go last, because as usual, she's very eloquent and I'm not, but I do want to just start off really quickly, comments. Our August meeting every year is one that I, it's both exciting and I dread it because it's the huge process of approving the budget. We have a very difficult task of making decisions about next year's expenses after less than 60% of the year has passed. We also don't have confirmed numbers on large renewal contracts and premiums for things like health insurance. So that being said, I do want to just take a moment to acknowledge the administrative team and all of the managers that do a wonderful job forecasting the year ahead and providing as much information as they possibly can to help us make an informed decision. I do want to encourage everyone, as usual, you know, the board packet is posted Mondays before the meeting. It is very lengthy at times, especially during the budget season, but it does a wonderful job of being extremely transparent, more transparent than I would say the average library is. And so that gives us a lot of information about the budget process and especially how the different funds work with the library. I do want to draw attention to the programming statistics presented. I was kind of wowed by the huge improvement in the number of programs offered this year, especially for adults. A lot of them are Continued Education, and it's wonderful to see the attendance at these programs continuing to increase. Last but certainly not least, I want to thank Carissa for her service as a trustee. She's been a valuable resource, not only to all the trustees, but myself as well. She's done a fantastic job with the director evaluation process. I don't know how we would do that without her. I'm already panicked about this year without you, but you have just been a wonderful, a wonderful contribution to the board, so we thank you very much. All righty, we are on to item number eight, library directors' reports.
You guys have actually talked about a couple of the things I was going to talk about. The, first off, I want to thank School Specialty, the business that donated the nook huddle pod to the library. They were moving office from Lombard to a new location, and they had had a showroom at their Lombard location, and this was their floor sample, and so they donated that to us. The list price on these is about $15,000, so it was a big deal for us to get one of those, and everybody loves it. And we've already had a request that we get another one for upstairs, so if anybody knows anyone with a nook huddle pod that they're willing to give away, we'd love to have another one. It is wonderful, there have been loads of people, every time I go back there, there's someone in it, so it's in the children's department, just to the, if you go up to the children's services desk and look to your left, you'll see it, it's against the...
Can we pull up a picture of it? It's on page 19 of the board packet, if that helps at all. It's just so, it's so cool to see.
Yeah. It is a very cool piece of furniture.
Adorable.
And the pendant light is LED, and it actually changes color, just very slowly changes color, so just a wonderful thing for us to have. Again, the statistics, summer reading, you'll get your full report next month, but just to look at the increase, there were over 700 more kids in July attending programs at the library this year than there were last year, and that's just in the month of July. If you have not looked at our teen statistics, we are nearly double our program attendance year-to-date over last year. So, kudos to our staff who have picked up in the teen services. That's a huge part of our new strategic plan is improving our services to teens. And you can tell that things are working. We have been way more successful than we expected to be this soon into what we've been doing. Also, someone had asked, I think it might have been Carissa, about the school prize pickups. So, we actually had our staff go out to three different schools and do summer reading prize pickups at the schools in the month of July. We did not get as many folks as we had expected, but they are looking at that and what worked, what didn't, and it will be coming back next year. One of those sessions, they only got three people. But the others, they got a couple of dozen. So, it's, they're really looking at how they can do that better. And just, if you have not been up to the adult nonfiction department and taken a look at the new classification system for cookbooks, it's really cool. So, we did, in librarian speak, we called it, we de-dewed. So, we took the Dewey Decimal Numbers off the cookbook section and we have categorized it under special classifications. So, it's things like you can find cooking for special diets or cooking for specific equipment like a slow cooker or an Instant Pot. So, go and take a look. Our staff actually has presented on this at a recent conference and will be presenting on it at the Illinois Library Association Conference in October. And finally, I just, I, like everyone else, have to thank Carissa for your absolutely invaluable service to this library. You have been such a wonderful trustee to work with. You are always so thoughtful and you always ask good questions. And you make us think and you make us go through all of the steps when we're doing, when making decisions. And so, I have really enjoyed having you on our board and I'm going to miss you.
I have a question, if I may. One section of your report, the next steps of the building planning and overhaul and all of that. I've had some interaction with people and the Guiding DG people have and so forth, specifically about parking at the library. And that's, I just wanted to mention because there are people here who've expressed those concerns, that some of that, to whatever extent we can, given the constraints, is being revisited both by the library's architects and by the village. So, we'll see what comes out of it. But everybody knows that the parking situation is a little bit fraught or landlocked. We've got two entities involved in it. But your input, both at this meeting and at the Guiding DG, was heard.
And so, we did, our architects are underway with a survey of the property just to be completely sure of exactly what we're encroaching on with the option that includes the elbow, the large elbow ramp for ADA accessibility from the parking lot side. And I'm just going to share a quick story that happened this month. And it just goes to show that doing the baseline for ADA accessibility isn't truly enough. Our circulation manager happened to be at the circulation desk. A gentleman came to the desk. He had attempted to leave the library but could not make it up the ramp to the parking lot. He needed someone to come and physically help push him up that ramp to get to the library, to get back to the parking lot. He'd made it down, but he could not make it back up without them. And that is not the experience that we want our folks who are trying to access their library to have. And I just imagine what that would be like in the winter. So, we do expect to have product architecture back to us in September or October with the results of those surveys and with the options so that we can look at those, look at that a little more closely and whether or not it impacts parking. We hope it doesn't.
I feel like your mic turned off. I just don't want it to be an issue with the recording also. I mean, we can hear you now, but I know with the budget stuff coming up.
It just stopped suddenly.
There is nothing on the, there's nothing on the little screen on that one. Okay.
It's probably, maybe a battery.
I hope everyone was able to hear. Okay. That was all I had.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, number nine is new business, which is the.
Can we take a break before we get into the weeds with all of this?
Yes, we'll do a quick five-minute recess.
Thank you.
So, we'll reconvene. Let me see, what time it is? Seven, let's do 7:45. We'll just round it up to seven minutes real quick.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started again since we've got some major things going, coming up. All right, so, let's see. Item nine, new business is the Window Replacement Project Bid Award.
All right. This is the main capital needs assessment project for this year. We allotted $157,912. It originally appeared as the exterior west windows. What this really turns out to be is all of the 1979 zipper system windows that are on the north, south and west sides of the building. And there was a report from our Building Operations Director and the companies that he worked with that appeared in last month's packet and this month's packet. We worked with Shales-McNutt Construction, our construction managers who consulted on the bid process. They, we did have three bidders. There was a bid alternate to also replace the clear story windows in the bid package. This was not included in the original scope of work and cost estimation. And the sheltered location of these windows, they are each under an overhang. So, they are much more sheltered than the remaining windows of this type. So, those are a lower priority item at this time. So, Shales-McNutt has made the recommendation to go with our low bidder, Reliant Contract Glass for the bid amount of $1,12,495. And this would be for those 1979 zipper system windows on the north, south and west sides of the building. And Ian, our Building Operations Director, is here to answer any questions you might have about the actual windows.
Can you give us like a 101 guide to what a zipper system is?
Yeah, so.
Very intrigued by this.
And this mic seems really sun-gyzy. So, yeah, they, it's an older system. They actually stopped using it in the mid-'80s. So, around the pane of glass, you have a rubber gasket, rubber neoprene, something of that, it's very dense. And then around the framework, you have another gasket. And the zipper is this other piece of neoprene that is sandwiched in that holds the window pane to the frame. So, with, over the years and with weather and everything else, that has started to dry out. They don't make this system anymore, so. Of course, if we had to replace a pane of glass, there's no guarantee that we could reuse that seal and then it's trying to get it replaced in a rush. So, this is, you know, all of the window system that was not done in the '97 renovation. These are all original and it's end of life.
And Reliant was the one that actually came out in like 2021? And is it 2020 that kind of provided all that, the pictures and all that? Okay.
Yep, and then we revisited it and looked at it and then brought in SMC to get their opinion on it. And then that's when I made my proposal to Julie to get this done.
I was smiling when this came up because, as you know, some of us have been visiting other libraries and I've been to a couple of board meetings lately and they are also doing window replacements, even on some facilities that are much newer than what we've got. So, apparently, this is one of those things.
What would be the timing for the replacement?
So, we were going to try to get this done this calendar year. The metal for the frames seems to be the biggest hiccup and we're hearing anywhere from 13 to 16 weeks. So, we probably will go ahead and do this in the spring at the break in the winter. So, we have a plan all set. If we can get it sooner, we'll get it done sooner. But most likely, it's going to be springtime.
Does this require shutting down a section of the building? Or you can, you take one out and put it back in and kind of move along?
Yeah, anything that's taken out is going to be replaced by the end of that workday.
Yeah.
The only thing that will be affected is the windows that are up in what is the outside of the IT section that are on the north side. We will need to go ahead and shut down the ADA access ramp that day just because there's going to be a scissor lift and for safety purposes. So, we'll need to do signage, kind of like what we do with the tuck pointing and the roofing. There's going to be signage pointing to the south entrance. And then I will work with the village to see if we can do some more additional temporary parking so that way they won't have to walk this far.
So, when you say that, I think about future construction plans, if that passes within this board. How is that affected then? Those windows that, if we end up playing with that ADA side of the wall is, I mean, how do we protect those windows? How do we make sure that there's not, do you know what I'm saying? I guess I'm confused a little bit.
Right. So, you're talking about job site protection to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just like, if we end up doing construction on that side of the building and then we put in these new windows, it seems like.
Usually, what you'll do is you'll protect it all with masonite, which is a heavy, I hate to say, it's like compressed cardboard, but cardboard, sawdust, it's compressed together with glue. It's very heavy. It's used for flooring protection. It's used for construction protection. So, what we would do is put that in place to make sure that nothing was damaged during any of the future construction that could occur.
Well, I'm happy that apparently not only is Reliant the low bidder, but they were the favored bidder because they have had experience with us before.
Yes, we have used Reliant in the past for when we've gotten paints of glass.
So, that's a win-win for us.
Do we have any other questions for you? Do we have a motion?
I will move that we award the Window Replacement Project to Reliant Contract Glass in the amount of $112,495,000.
Is it $945 or $495?
$495.
$112,495,000.
$495. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid to Reliant. Let's go ahead and proceed as roll call.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Zledak?
Yes.
Trustee Toppick?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes. All right, thank you very much, Ian. And that has been passed. All right, item 10 is unfinished business. Item A is the resolution to amend the term of office for trustees of the Downers Grove Public Library from six years to four years. Those of you that have been attending, we started this discussion, I think, in May and kind of talked about the pros and cons. Took it to our lawyer who drafted this resolution. It can be found in the board packet. I'm not going to read it because there's a lot of whereas's involved. But essentially, you just want to allow more people to be a part of the library board and hopefully increase interest because it's not as long of a commitment. So, yeah, open the floor to any comments or.
My comment on that, when I ran across the section that said we were allowed to do this, which was like, why hasn't this happened before? Was that what we're asking people now is when their child is in middle school, before their first term is up, he or she is going off to college. And the four years seems to be less of a shock for someone who may want to participate in it and more in line with what other terms are for other kinds of municipal and even statewide offices. So, it seemed a logical thing to pursue in the hopes that more people would be stepping forward, more willing to put some time into it without it appearing to be so burdensome.
Well, I was a little hesitant at first. I sometimes approach things like this of saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." But it does seem that this would provide more citizen input to the process over time. In other words, if there's a little more turnover on the board and you're looking at a guy that's been there way too long, that it will provide more citizen input. The cons might be a little less institutional memory and a little more training involved and that sort of thing. But I think we can deal with that. It's going to be a little bit more work for the village in their appointment process, but they haven't objected to it and they've been brought up to speed on the plan. So, I support you.
I'll just say, when I learned that I only had to complete the last four years of a term instead of all six years of a term, it was, I was happy. So, four years makes a lot more sense. I was surprised that it's six years, honestly. So, I think it's a good idea.
Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to amend the term of office for trustees of the Downers Grove Public Library from six years to four years.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to amend the term of office for trustees of the Downers Grove Public Library from six to four years. Should we do a roll call?
You have to do it.
Oh, yeah, we do, we do. Yeah.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Zledak?
Yes.
Trustee Toppick?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
All right. That has been passed. All right, the big one, item B, fiscal year 2025 budget and levy.
All right, so this starts on page 92 of your board packet, if you're following along. This, the cover in your board packet does explain our budget process, our funds, and kind of a history of how we've gotten to where we are. It also includes explanations of every budget line that we have, both revenue and expenditure. And the biggest difference between this month and last month's draft is that for the social worker position, you have both the with a social worker and without a social worker. The difference is that we calculated that social worker to actually begin working in June of this year. And this is a strategy that the village has also used when adding, when adding new positions, to start them mid-year so that you don't have quite such a big hit in the first year of having that new position. So, we did go ahead and make that change to the budget. So, I'm just going to walk you through the drafts. On page 103, this shows our revenue breakdown. We have gone, all of these drafts are based on a 4% levy increase. Between 2017 and 2024, our average levy increase has been 2.31%, which is below the CPI average for the same period of 2.56%. The library's tax rate has fallen 9% from 2017 to 2024. And that is actually a function of the equalized assess valuation of the property. And that is actually a function of the equalized assessed valuation of the property in the in our service area, rising at a faster clip than the tax levy rate, the tax levy increases. And down to 104, this, ooh, where's that? Page four, there's 104. Okay, this is the this shows the 4% estimated change in the equalized assessed valuation of the property. This is the same estimated equalized assessed valuation change that the village is using in their budget, in their budget planning process. It also shows the 4% increase to the levy itself. And then because those, they do not directly offset, but they are almost equal in the way that they affect the tax rate. So as you can see, that 4% increase to to the levy amount, if there is indeed a 4% increase to the equalized assessed valuation of the property, our tax rate would actually still fall by a very tiny amount. Then the following page, 105, this is the taxpayer impact. The average homeowner would get a very slight decrease if our assumptions are correct. And so far, we have been pretty close in our past years on on our assumptions on the equalized on the equalized assessed valuation of the homes. The village does a has been wonderful in providing us their their estimates so that we can just follow along with what they're doing. Then the next page, 106, shows our tax rate, levy and EAV, and how each of those have have gone up or down in the last five years. As you can see, in 2020, the per $100,000 of home value are our homeowners were paying about $70. This year it was $67. So you can see that we are not keeping up with with the Consumer Price Index. And we do anticipate that very, very tiny decrease at a 4% levy rate. So now we get into the two different expenditures drafts. The revenue the revenue draft is the same on both sides. So this is the draft without a social worker. So what we have done, we have adjusted the library capital replacement fund transfer from 2024, which was originally budgeted at $374,000 and change. Adjusted that down in order to meet the operating reserve fund balance at the end of 2024. So this number here, or at the end of 2025, I'm sorry, I misspoke. So we had budgeted 374,850 to be transferred. This contemplates only transferring 237,000 this year and then going forward from that amount with a 3% annual increase. And as you can see, what we need for our operating reserves is right about $500,000. And this would meet that amount. And then on to the next page, 108. This is the simplified expenditure sheet. This shows all of our personnel lines and their variation. And this would be an increase of 3.5%. That is with no social worker. And that is also at a wage and salary increase of a total of 4%, a 2.6% cost of living increase, along with 1.4% merit and longevity for staff. Then on to the non-personnel lines. Our non-personnel lines are only going up by 0.8%. Our staff is very good at, you know, trying to make sure that we're we're getting the most bang for our buck from all of our vendors and keeping our costs as low as possible. So that comes out to a total increase for the budget. The blended increase is 2.7% in the no social worker draft. For the library capital replacement fund is the same in both drafts. This is what appears in the capital needs assessment 2017 to 2027 as we have updated it. So that's your your latest number, the 83,470. From that point, you pages 111 to 120 give the departmental breakdowns of this budget. And then you get down to page 121, which gives us the Illinois Public Library Annual Report Percentage Analysis. And this is actually something that our per capita grant or that the standards for Illinois Public Libraries state that for your budget planning process, that you should be comparing your budget to this statewide to these statewide percentages, just so you know where you stand. And so our we're a little bit over on salaries and benefits. That is typical for collar counties because we pay a lot more than the south than the southern end of the state. And then our all other expenditures is lower. This also has a bit of a function of the fact that we are a city or a village library. And so we do not pay for our electricity. So there are a lot of library districts in in the state that have to pay for their electricity. And then the following pages are, this is the expenditures in graph form. As you can see, it's salaries and benefits. That's where it's all at. And then our print materials, electronic materials, other materials, and then all other expenditures. And then on the revenue side, just a very vivid reminder that like libraries in Illinois by statute are primarily property tax funded. The statewide average is over 91% of your of public library revenue comes from property taxes. The only other thing that rises above 1% is that personal property replacement tax. Feel free to go to the state's website and try to figure out what the heck that is. And then we get into our draft with a social worker. So for this draft, the difference is about $40,000. And that is estimating the pay grade and the benefits elections of a person coming into this job. So all estimates. But it would still, with that reduced library capital replacement fund transfer, we would still get to the fund balance needed for our operating reserves by the end of 2025. So again, it's a lot closer to that operating reserve balance. And the library capital replacement fund does not change. Then getting into the simplified expenditures on the personnel side, it brings us up to 4.3% increase to the personnel lines with that social worker starting in June. And on the non-personnel sides, we're still at a 0.8% increase. The blended rate goes up to 3.3% in the draft with a social worker. Again, capital replacement fund does not change. And then you get into all of your departmental breakdowns if you want to look at all of those. And then page 138 has that IBLAR percentage analysis again with the social worker included. Back to our graph, it does not really move the needle on any of that. Then the following pages, I did include a tax levy chart for the board at different levels of tax levy increase. We had talked about this a little bit at the last board meeting. So this just demonstrates that with the full else with the full transfer to the capital replacement fund, that that year-end fund balance does not meet the operating reserves level if we continue to do that. And then just down here at the bottom, I did include the fact that a 1% tax levy increase by this board nets $61,795. So if you're going a quarter of a percent, it's $15,449 is the difference in the amount of tax levy that the library would collect. And then I did this with our reduced LCRF transfer. And as you can see, that brings us up to a to a level that would meet the year-end fund balance on both sides. And you can see that without the social worker, you could go down a little more in the levy amount with the social worker. The 4% is really where you need to is really the sweet spot. And then I also included, just to make sure that you guys had it, the reduced library capital replacement fund transfer, what that does to the fund balance of the capital replacement fund. It does show that we will still be able to do all of the projects that are currently listed in that and still wind up with over $388,000 in the capital replacement fund by the end of the current plan. However, one of the things that because we're looking at some larger capital expenses and a larger project, I think I really believe that it's time for us to do a new cap, full new capital needs assessment before, once we have those cost estimates from the building planning study, to do a new capital needs assessment and then give it all to the finance to a financial planning consultant to talk about what the best way, what what works funding wise. And on from there, this board would be talking to the village council about how how do we go about doing this? So I really do believe that that is something that that we should be doing sooner rather than later. And then the portion of your packet dedicated to the budget wraps up with the narratives that are included in the village's budget documents. So this is the cover sheet for the library fund. And then there is a cover sheet for the library capital replacement fund as well. And these are really just kind of the short version of what's in my report in this board packet for you all about our process, about how things have developed. And one of the things that we did include is actually a link to the a link to the board packet that will be included so that folks can click through directly from the village's budget into this board packet to with the pages that the budget information is on so that people can can look and read through that more detailed information. So with all of that, do you have any questions for me? Or are we ready to move into? Van McGarry, our adult and teen services manager, is here to answer some of your questions about the social work interns and the social worker position proposal. Her report is included in your packet and she has a prepared presentation.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
A couple of quick questions. The professional services line?
Yes.
So that is for staff attending thing? What what all fits into that besides?
Professional services is outside presenters for programs. So in adult and teen services budget and kids room budget and and even our IT budget, there is that's most of what their budgets are for. In the administration department's budget for professional services, it is mainly consulting services. And this includes things like when we had a personnel that we needed to do a third-party investigation of a personnel situation. That would be what comes out of something that comes out of there. For 2025, I have included monies for that financial planning consultant, but also at this time to do that capital needs assessment in 2025 as well. So the consultants for that.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question was the health insurance. Is there like a historical average or I mean, like, I know that it's it's changes, but is there kind of a?
Over the last five years, it has been as high as 5% and as low as zero. But we've had equal amounts of zeros and fives and a 3% thrown in there as well. So the average is about 2.6% over the five-year average.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what that I didn't understand the question.
Oh, the health insurance.
Oh, the health insurance.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry.
So would you I'm sorry, would you say that's the biggest variable, just given?
Yes.
Not really knowing people's elections and such?
Yes, yeah. And and we usually try to, because the library mirrors what the village does for village staff, we pay the same employer contribution at all benefits levels as the village does for their staff. But I will say that the difference between an employee only at the lowest cost plan and family coverage at the highest cost plan is a swing of about $20,000. So let that sink in when you're thinking about the library's tax levy increase because one person changing their election from single to family in a single year costs the library more than we collect by doing an extra quarter of a percent levy.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Sorry. Tuition reimbursement. Where did I miss? I don't know where where I'm looking for that. Like, where is it in here?
Oh, God, I just I just blocked up on that one. I'm sorry.
That's also in the professional services line, I believe.
Okay.
I double-checked that right before the meeting.
I wasn't, I just wanted, okay.
Give me one more because it's listed in the beginning report of the budget section here in the packet.
Oh, yes, I must have missed it.
But I will say, we do have a $5,000 budget budgeted amount.
Okay.
For the the this will be the first year that we're funding tuition reimbursement.
Right, and I do, I put out the initial, you know, intent to request reimbursement so that we can plan accordingly budget-wise. And we do have two staff that indicated that they will that they are considering applying for it next year.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to add on kind of what Julie was saying about the health insurance premiums and and say again, kind of what you were saying about the electricity thing. It's the relationship that the library has as part of the village government really benefits us in that aspect, too. One of the library board meetings that I attended, they were talking, they were they were a library district. And they were they were even considering being part of a pool of other library districts. And they were looking at an increase of 23% for their health insurance this year. And I was like, oh, my God. And then and then the next like the next week, we had our meeting. I was like, oh, okay, that seems 5% still, it's it's tough. And that's 20%. And that twenty, twenty thousand dollar swing is rough, but twenty-three percent increase across the board is, I mean, that's, I don't even know how you budget for that. And this is, these weren't small libraries, these were large libraries.
Yes.
I have a question about the capital fund. And as you know, I'm still kind of new to this, so maybe I'm just not understanding right. I can't put my hands on it, but I thought I saw the goal was in twenty twenty-seven that there would be a million dollars in that fund. Is that correct? Or am I misreading something?
That, that was a goal that the board set when they created the fund. So it's up to you to, it, it is not codified anywhere. That does not appear in any, in our finance policy. That is, that was just a, a, you know, we should have some money left. We, you also have to remember that this, our library capital replacement fund was actually created with a one point four million dollar transfer from the library fund when we entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Downers Grove for them to cover any operating overages due to the property tax cycle. The village created the need for that reserve for us to have, you know, over a million in the library fund by changing their fiscal year from May one to January one. And that happened quite a long time ago, well before any of us were here. Because you know, we're primarily property, we're primarily property tax. I'm sorry, Dave was here. But because we're primarily property tax funded, all of our money comes in June. And, or half of our money comes in June and half of our money comes in September, October. So when the village created, changed the fiscal year, they created the need to carry that larger balance. And that had been money that the library had been accumulating for capital projects. So we had to use it for that. On the village's balance sheets, our operating overage does not make any difference. And quite frankly, because the village handles our finances, it's all theirs and invisible to us anyway. So our intergovernmental agreement allowed us to not carry those kind, that operating fund balance and start our capital reserve fund with it. The capital needs assessment laid out more than four million dollars worth of projects. So one point four million into it, but four million dollars in projects. So what this board, and we did a financial management plan. And that plan said that the library board should increase its levy one time by eleven point seven five percent. And then from that point forward, two to three percent a year in order to fund all of the projects in the capital needs assessment. The village was like, oh, don't do that. Here, we'll do this intergovernmental agreement. You guys can use your one point four to get you started on the capital needs projects. And then this board decided that the best way forward from there would be to pledge the, the amount under budget every year because we do, because we have to do this budget so far in advance and we're, we're always planning for a larger health, larger health insurance increase than we actually got. So we come in under budget. And so we're able to make these larger transfers into the capital replacement fund. This board, when that was done, this board was like, yeah, and we can have a million dollars in the bank when it's over because this is working. And I had cautioned this, the board every year, that we were using this fund balance strategy is what I refer to it as, that this is borrowed time for a fund balance strategy because one of these years, we're gonna come in, we're going to perform closer to budget and we're not gonna have that balance to move over. And with the last couple of years, with the increases, with the inflation that we've seen, with the increases in wages that we've seen, the cost of living increases, we have seen our, our budget perform, our expenditures performing closer to budget. And so every year, we've been eroding the, the ability to continue that fund balance strategy.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
It always helps for us to re-hear it too.
Well, and, and where did it come from? And, and the million dollars was just a, you know, it was just, it was a target put forth by this board. And so, you know.
So we didn't just spend six hundred thousand dollars we weren't planning on. It's more, it's the amount going into it has gone down.
Yeah.
Any concerns about the number that we look like we're gonna be at in twenty twenty-seven?
Yes.
Well.
Good question.
We knew, we knew going in that if we were not following our finance consultant's advice, that going beyond twenty twenty-seven was always going to be, having, having money left in the capital replacement fund after twenty twenty-seven, we would be lucky to have that. Because we have, we've been doing three point, we've done three point two million dollars projects on a one, on one point four million dollars of money in there. And everything else has just been that, that fund balance. This was never a strategy that was going to last forever. This was never a long-term strategy. And that's, and that's why we do the capital needs assessment again and do the finance piece again.
Okay. And that you, we would be doing next year.
Yes.
Okay.
Lucky us.
Yeah.
All right. Ready for Van?
Wanted to mention one thing, back to the, the social worker thing. I've looked at Van's report and a lot of the questions we raised are, are there. But I, I wanted to make an observation too, that we, we would not be the only library in this area to do this. Some of them call it something a little bit different. Gail Borden, the main library in Elgin, has a full-time social services office. It's not just a social, and it's bilingual. Libraries like ours, particularly the ones that are located right in the, in the downtown areas have had an evolution of, of roles that sometimes has been hard to catch up with. But it does seem to be something that's coming for a lot of municipal libraries, urban libraries, downtown libraries. There are whole states that are looking at do, at doing this at this point. So with, with the success of the internship program over the last couple of years, this isn't as earth-shaking as it might have been. And the other thing is that, that while it's true that the strategic plan took a snapshot of that, that strategic plan was a couple of years ago. The situation has evolved since, since then. We've had more people needing more services over the last couple of years. So the, you know, a plan is a plan. It's subject just to some variation if, if the needs change. And those are the kind of things that we really need to look at when we're talking about the social worker.
All right. Are you ready for Van?
Can I jump in just to answer Bernadette's question? Right, the tuition reimbursement is coming out of seminars, conferences and meetings, which is what we use for all of our professional development.
Slow it down a little bit. All right, good evening. My name is Van McGarry and I am the adult and teen services manager at the Downers Grove Public Library. I would like to start by also expressing my many thanks to Carissa for your many years of service on the library board. As some of you may know, I am the current library site supervisor for our social work internship program. And in twenty twenty-three, we added a second supervisor, a local licensed clinical social worker who has helped expand our program services. The foundation generously funds the stipend for both the social work interns as well as the licensed clinical social worker. This funding is set to expire at the end of the current school year in May of twenty twenty-five. As you know, as a public library, we do our best to serve everyone who comes through our doors. This is reflected in our mission of welcoming all to discover, grow, play and learn. And our vision of being the heart of a diverse community, providing inspiring ideas, community connections and empowering opportunities. Very often, folks come into the library looking for something interesting to read, listen or watch. Other times, other library staff and I help patrons find information for their school or research project. In other instances, patrons come in to use our computers, do the community puzzle, attend a program or perhaps simply sit quietly. And more and more, we are seeing folks come in with very complicated needs who may be in crisis and are searching for help with multiple resources such as housing, medical aid, senior services, mental health, domestic violence and more. Like many other libraries, several years ago, back in twenty nineteen, DGPL recognized that we needed to bring in individuals with the specific specialized expertise, knowledge and skills to meet these social services needs in order for us to be able to serve everyone who comes through our doors and to help us live up to our mission and vision as a public library. This is when we began our partnership with Aurora University to host social work interns. Library workers and social workers have very different skill sets. As noted in the board packet, it takes years of specialized education and training to become a social worker. Using their background in human development, social welfare, psychopathology and more, social workers are able to navigate sensitive and challenging situations and moments in people's lives, develop connection and rapport and to foster trust in order to get to the place where they can uncover unmet needs and begin to help to address them. Thus, social work interactions are much more involved and take much longer than the traditional interactions at a busy library service desk. For these reasons and more, libraries, including ours, need someone with a social work background and cannot simply fill the service gap with another library staff member. We are also unable to fill the extremely high demand for social work help at the library with the village's social worker. As noted in this month's board packet, our social work interns averaged just over twenty-four hours per week combined during this past school year and helped four hundred and thirty-one patrons with social services needs between September twenty twenty-three through July of twenty twenty-four. And within this timeframe, they had about seventy-four percent of the number of interactions that the full-time social worker at the village had in the same time period in a little over half the amount of hours. Furthermore, it should be noted that the interns, like in years past, spent most of September training and developing familiarity with the library and the patrons and had only one interaction during September. Thus, their data was really more like ten months' worth. This is on top of the full-time social workers' efforts at the village. In addition, during the month of July, library staff documented nearly sixty instances where patrons were seeking social services assistance but were not able to meet with anyone at the library. While library staff did our very best to assist patrons by providing a referral such as a phone number, office, location, form, et cetera, patrons really needed to meet with a social worker at the library and declined going to the village to meet with a social worker there. From our meeting with the village social worker earlier this summer, she confirmed to the interns and I that she would not hold any hours here at the library. This reinforces our strong need to have a social worker on staff at the library to meet folks literally where they are at and to fill our ever-growing service gap. Not only have our social work interns helped out with the patrons seeking help, they have also helped with the safety and security at the library as well. And to speak more on that, I am going to turn things over to Ian.
Sorry, Van, I gotta move this mic. All right. Thank you. And also thank you to Carissa for your years of service and knowledge and just being a wonderful trustee. Good evening. As Van mentioned, my name is Ian Nor and I am the building operations director at the Downers Grove Public Library. Three of my staff and I are service building monitors for the library. A monitor's job is to be helpful, assist and enforce the library's code of conduct for all visitors. We do our best to make sure that the library environment is a place where everybody feels welcome and is able to enjoy their time. As Van mentioned, I would like to talk to you about the role social worker has with us from a safety and security standpoint. As you know, everyone is welcome at the library. Library is a place of knowledge, a place to explore, just visit with a staff member you're familiar with. As with any public building, our doors are open to anyone. If you've spent some time in the library, you may have seen some of the interactions with the monitors and our patrons. It could be assisting a patron, finding an answer to a question, directing them where to go or addressing an issue that goes against the library's code of conduct. Some of our patrons have a difficult time navigating the do's and don'ts of the library. Sometimes we have to talk to specific patrons more than others. Because monitors are seen as a figure of authority, not all of our interactions to address behavioral issues goes, go as smoothly as we'd like. Monitors are trained to approach situations with empathy and, when required, de-escalation techniques. But sometimes it just doesn't work. Many times the monitors will ask for assistance or, I'm sorry, we'll get some feedback here. Many times the monitors will ask for assistance or advice from the social worker. As the social worker may have had an interaction with this individual or an individual that we're currently working with, an insight that the monitors don't have. No private information is exchanged, but merely we're looking for advice and recommendations on how to approach our soon-to-be interaction with this person. To us, as monitors, it could look like the person is just having a bad day. But to the social worker, it could be many different things. Mental health, recently unhoused, in need of food or shelter, questions or other social services. The crisis that that person is experiencing can look very different. And as monitors, we're not trained to identify what that looks like. Training like mental health first aid and de-escalation helps, but it does not replace the four to six plus years of knowledge and tools that a social worker has. Many times, social workers are able to get to the root cause of the issue that's causing the unwanted, unwanted behavior, give help or at the very least guidance on steps that can be taken to assist in the crisis that they are experiencing. For example, we have a patron who seems to be dealing with a lot at the moment. They have a habit of talking their thoughts out loud, pacing or walking around and becoming very focused on what they are experiencing. This behavior usually subsides after they can vocalize their thoughts. It is disruptive. It can also be very alarming for other library patrons to witness. Most of the time when the monitors talk to this person, it intensifies because they don't realize they're being disruptive or don't see as what they're doing is wrong. They get upset and often this results in the person asked to be, this person being asked to leave for the day. This happens again because the monitors are the staff that uphold the library's rules. And almost every time we've talked to this person, it's ended up asking for them to leave and it's been a bad interaction. So one day, Andy, our social work intern was around and we asked her if she could assist us. They've had more positive interactions with this person. Andy was able to talk to them, offer up some options to them on where they could talk and this person could work through what they were experiencing at that moment. Andy in that moment was able to meet this individual where they were. This individual did not feel the need to get defensive, they felt heard and they felt important. It honestly was game-changing. We, the monitors, try to take the same approach now when we deal with this individual. Does it always work? No, it doesn't. But we do our best to see, I'm sorry, we do our best to. But we do our best to see, I'm sorry, we do our best to use what we saw and learned from Andy when we approach our situations. Every day is different, and every day, someone in the community is experiencing something personal to them and could be experiencing what, what could be their worst day ever. Having a social worker in a place that they know can access free of charge and an environment they feel comfortable at could be just what is needed in that moment in their life. Libraries change lives in more, in more ways than just two bucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian, for sharing valuable insight from your safety and security perspective. I'd like to read, um, some words from our strategic planning findings book. On page one hundred, seventy-nine percent of the one thousand seven hundred and three respondents strongly or somewhat agreed with connecting community members to social services. In addition, from that strategic planning findings book, it also mentioned that the library is viewed as a welcoming place. The library is available to people with all kinds of needs. There is a recognition that the library recognizes that it is a, that it serves a diverse community and is trying to adapt and recognize all people. The library is forward-thinking. It serves as a community center and is part of the community and that it makes, and that makes it special. I believe that all of these statements are true. We are a welcoming s- space. And we are available to people with all kinds of needs, including social services needs. I also believe that we are adaptable and forward-thinking. And adding a full-time social worker to the library staff will allow us to continue to uphold our mission, vision, and values. Thank you for your time and consideration. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
And just FYI, Van's written report is pages one forty-seven to one fifty-four in your board packet.
I have a question. This is a different kind of hiring process than what we normally would look for. You know, or someone has a research background or an MLS or whatever. How, how do you see that playing out? How are we going to get ahold of the right person for this if we do it?
Well, we are very fortunate to have Aurora University so nearby. It is one of the largest social work programs in the country, so a great place to post, to find new graduates. Um, and we do have our licensed clinical social worker who works as our site supervisor with our social work interns that we could tap to help us in the interview and, in the whole hiring process.
Including job description and things like that? Okay, so you're not talking about like having to hire an outside consultant or something to?
And we do have, as, as well, um, as several of you have, have stated, there are other libraries that have social workers on staff, and so we have all of those job descriptions. Um, we've collected a bunch of them, uh, to help us put together our role.
Thank you.
I know you've spoken to this before, but for reminder for me and maybe for some of our audience and so forth, how will the world look with a full-time social worker as opposed to what we have today, which is two social work interns and a supervisor? What's the, you know, how will that change?
Well, well, first of all, right now, our two interns average about only twenty-four hours per week, and we have many, many patrons who come to the library in need of social services help when they are not there. Um, in addition, we are going through the transitional difficulties right now with the new school year. We had amazing interns this previous school year, and they built up many connections in the community, many connections with our patrons, and, and they, you know, finished up their program. And we are starting brand-new ground zero again with brand-new interns, and it's going to take a lot of time for them to understand, you know, their role at the library, build those relationships with patrons at the library. It takes a lot of time for patrons to develop that relationship and trust because now they're seeing new faces, and it's really difficult to, um, be able to give your, you know, private information and talk about your, you know, sensitive situations. And, um, in addition to that, we have to reintroduce the interns to all of the community organizations all over again and then have them build up all the programming and all the outreach and, um, familiarize with all of the resources that are out there. And so, we kind of build up and we get to a really strong place with our program, and then we have to start all over, and this is a detriment to the library and our community members.
Um, I really appreciate both you and Ian coming and presenting this, and of course, all the information in the packet was really great and really thorough. I, you know, I, and it's very compelling, right? Like, I, I can see the need. I, I like your question, Dave, about like what change would we see? How would it be different? How could we improve the way we serve and welcome people to the library? My one concern, I, I think I mentioned it last time, and I, I think I continue to have it, is the relationship with the village and kind of what that looks like. Um, I'm curious about, you know, when you met with them, you said in the summer, you know, wh- what were the reasons for not wanting to have office? And that, maybe you don't know this, office hours in the library. What has that relationship looked like up until this point?
Yeah, so, um, we met in person and had a really, um, in-depth conversation. So, as, um, noted in the packet, the village social worker made it very clear that her role, um, as defined by the village was to have services at the village and not off-site at other locations as a village employee. She is, needs to be available for patrons to come in, for people to call her, um, at her office. Um, she let us know that she often gets calls from, um, the Downers Grove Police, where she might need to go out to, um, help out with us, um, an assist in crisis situations. And so, it was very important for her to be, you know, in her office and available to assist, um, from there. And when we asked, you know, we're letting her know that what kind of demand we're having at the library and that we were hoping to get a full-time social worker, she was very supportive. She said, yes, we need more social worker help in the community. Um, and the more help that people can get, the better. And so, we, um, both see that there is just so much need going on in the community.
Yeah, I just think that, that coordination and that, yeah, because like we've heard and seen in this packet, like, there would be a difference in terms of the services provided, which is providing, you know, continuity and also communication so that there's, you know, that we can be sure that we're providing things that we're saying we provide and that it's, there's not, there's not a kind of redundancy.
There isn't a redundancy, and then, as we mentioned in the packet, um, at the village social work office, there is a referral-based service um, where the social worker provides that, um, information about an office or, um, another, uh, location or a phone number or a form. Um, but she does not do the, um, short-term case management like our social work interns do, where we actually walk them through the HUD housing portal or we, you know, help them get registered for, um, liheep energy, um, uh, excuse me, utility discounts, et cetera. So, we do, um, provide services that are very complimentary and that will, um, support patrons in different ways.
So, so my understanding is that, uh, that she handles some walk-in services, somebody who knows they need help and, and just comes in and asks for it, and, and she, in those cases, usually refers them to another organization and does not necessarily, I mean, you talk about short-term case management. For example, she doesn't necessarily follow up with them to make sure they get that service from that agency. If the person comes back and says, well, that didn't work, or I couldn't reach them or something, maybe she'll resend them somewhere else. But there's not much follow-through. That's just not in her job description. Now, the other part of her job, I think, is, uh, crisis de-escalation and so forth for the police department. And, uh, that's a very important function, of course, but that, again, is, is short-term and referral and, and so forth. Our caseworkers, as I understand it, um, our interns, as I understand it, and quite frankly, the library has a great deal more face-to-face, day-to-day activities with, with people than almost any agency in Downers Grove, sort of the schools, I think. Um, and therefore, um, our staff members get to know some of our community members, and they don't, they're not equipped through our agitation for diagnosed, but they, they can kind of refer, but they kind of refer within to the interns. And therefore, the, uh, the, the village social worker doesn't have that kind of connection because they don't need to have that kind of action, yeah, interaction. But because we have, I don't know how many thousands of people a week coming through our doors, as I read some numbers earlier, just kids at programs and, uh, you know, thousands, we have much more interaction with the community. And therefore, we have much more opportunity, to use a neutral kind of word, um, to meet the needs of, of some of these people. And so, that's where this short-term case management comes into play. And as I understand, the social worker, a, a full-time, permanent social worker, permanent is a difficult word, I realize, but, but would be there, instead of twenty-four hours, would be there thirty-seven hours, for example, during the week. So, there is a benefit right there. And then there would also be more continuity because it would be one person, and I wouldn't be turning over every, every school year and so forth. So, those are the, those are the pluses. Um, the minuses, uh, I guess, are that comes at a price. And I think that's what we're going to be wrangling with a little bit. I don't think there's a lot of concern or, or disagreement on the need. Um, but how to cover the cost considering the other long-term expenses that are coming up, the, uh, the material sorter, the, uh, the fact, I mean, things that maintain, that are required to maintain the building. The capital, what is the title of that fund?
Capital replacement. Capital replacement.
Capital replacement fund. Those of you who operate a household or live in a condo association know that once in a while, if you're, if you're good at financial management, you build a fund over time, and you put a little money into that fund every month so that when the roof leaks, the money to fix the roof is already in the fund. And in the case of the library, we, we budget out major expenses so that we can, and we put a certain amount of money into the fund each year based on this complicated financial plan for predicting when we're going to need the money. And therefore, over the last n years, what has it been, seven years? Um, we haven't had to go back to the taxpayers, for example, for a, a special, uh, well, in condo world, you call it a special assessment. We haven't had to go back to the taxpayer saying, hey, the roof's leaking, we got to replace the roof. We had been putting a certain amount of money in there each time. Well, um, that fund is going to be kind of depleted, and therefore, we are going to do a new study for the next seven years. Last time, we had a, a certain amount of money to, to, to seed that fund. This, this year, we will have, and adjusting for inflation and everything, less money to seed it with. And so, uh, that's, that's one of the concerns. Um, it's also the issue that we're funding next, in the current budget for, I guess, seven months of a full-time social worker, uh, because they'll start in June. In a subsequent year, it'll be a twelve-month, and so we need to consider that. I'm, I'm talking too much. I'm just saying that I don't think there's a great deal of concern for the need. It's balancing the need and the need against the cost and, and the timing. And I think it's also been mentioned that the need in the community seems to be recognized by more and more people. Um, the library has kind of stepped up in at least the planning phase here. I would hope that the village of Downers Grove, the park districts, and I don't know whether there's other organizations, but it seems that that could potentially be a shared, a shared, uh, response long-term because, um, these people are all, that who are seeking assistance are members of our community, not just the library community, but the village community, the park district community, and so forth. And, uh, so I would hope long-term that it wouldn't just be the library, it would be stepping up to the plate here. But right now, we're the ones that are being asked to and apparently have some capability of it if we can, I hate to say it, but afford it.
Marty, I think you want to jump in?
Go on.
Oh, okay. Um, I think just to briefly just echo, um, Dave's thoughts, I think definitely the need has been, um, demonstrated, and, you know, you and Ian have done a great job, um, kind of demonstrating that in the presentation in May with the interns was very helpful. Um, you know, one thing that I always kind of look at in terms of, you know, how we use our budget is what do our patrons want? And so, I'm, you know, have this, the high-level strategic plan kind of constantly referring to it. And one of the, the main goals is, you know, expand outreach, partnerships, and opportunities that go beyond our physical building with an emphasis on services to areas most underserved and those in need. And I think, you know, the internal dialogue that I have is like, is it really the, the library's role? But we, you know, we've, we've, we have patrons that come to our meetings and talk about safety, and, um, you know, I, I don't think that an armed individual provides, uh, security or a secure environment or the feeling of a secure environment. It's certainly not something I want to see when I walk in. Um, and I think kind of going the route of de-escalation and empathy and really understanding who our specific, you know, more problematic patrons are and, and be able to kind of understand where they're coming from and, and treat them like humans is, um, it's a win not only for them, but for the library environment that we're trying to, you know, cultivate. But yes, I think the finances, given where we're at now, you know, we, we were kind of in a nice cushioned few years there, and now things are kind of catching up, and, you know, we've got two new part-time roles and, you know, the large materials handler, handler that we need to update or replace. Um, I think that's kind of where I've been back and forth literally since May about just, you know, the funding issue more than anything. So, um, just wanted to give my thoughts on where I'm at, really.
I'd like to share an anecdote. I was at the library a couple weeks ago. I came in and dropped some stuff off for the, for the food drive, and one of the interns was sitting there with a patron who, from the vibe and what I was able to overhear while I was waiting my turn, is someone that the intern had worked with periodically, a, a client, and someone I recognize as being a regular at the library. And the patron was telling the intern all the things that she could improve upon in her next job in terms of how to approach people like her who were going through crises. And I went to my car and cried. Sorry, but I did. Um, uh, it was like, that was a real relationship with a woman who felt she had gotten some real help and wanted to give her perspective on how it could be even better for the next person. That's pretty amazing interaction.
A question, I guess, probably for Julie. If we add the social worker, is it expected that we will still complete all the capital needs projects by two thousand and twenty-seven that we had planned for?
Yes, yes. We, um, and we will complete all of the things in the capital needs assessment through two thousand and twenty-seven um, under the, even under the reduced transfer. The, the big question comes in, one of the, the largest remaining, um, pieces of that, and actually, the largest remaining piece of the capital needs is carpet. And so, that is, if we're going to do a larger construction project, we really need to think about how about how that folds in. And so that's why I really thought we needed to move up that capital needs assessment so that we can look at how those capital needs are changing.
Okay. But with all that in mind, adding the social worker, you don't think will interfere with our ability to complete the capital projects that we sort of have lined up for the future, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the amount of the, the amount in that fund, how would that differ in 2027 with and without the social worker?
So without this, and again, this is all on estimates. Are we performing to budget, all of that? Up to this point, we have estimated closer to a million dollars left over in that capital replacement fund. But what we've really found is that we've spent down that fund balance in the library fund. And so even with, even without the social worker, we will still have to make a change to the transfer level for the capital replacement fund.
Okay. Thank you.
I said this at the last meeting, but I did some, you know, research on what other states were doing and found, you know, and I think I've said this, but, you know, Texas, Florida, New Jersey, New York, all over the country, libraries have social workers. And I listened to the stories you're telling about the relationships that Andy and Dawn were able to develop as interns. And I think about how rich a relationship would be with someone who's here full-time. And thinking back to what Sopis said about the safety, you know, that, a lot of people, not all, but many of the people who come in are in crisis and they come to this building because it is safe and it is air-conditioned or heated and it's right in the center of town and it's easy to get to. You know, I think that having someone here, I know that people talk about scope and what's the scope of a library. And for me, this is what a library does. Help people find the resources they need. And those resources might not be something that's a physical thing in the library. It might be something, providing that resource wherever that resource is. So it's, I wanted to say that.
And I, to dovetail on that a little bit, when we look, you know, we look at this budget, we look at how much a social worker would cost, even with a full year, not the prorated year, it's about 1% of our budget. It's a small relative amount. And then I think, you know, based on what you were saying, Van, and what I think we've heard throughout the last couple of years about the...
We can't hear that, can we?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. And I don't want to get too close, I can hear the feedback. So what I was going to say is that I, it sounds like, and I don't know if there's a way to quantify it necessarily right now, but there, you know, the return on that investment, I mean, not to speak in these kind of crass financial terms, but when we're talking about taxpayer money, right? So, I mean, it seems like the increased safety, their increased relationships with other government entities, the potentially reduced burden on your staff and the building monitor staff, or a different level of reliance, I guess. I feel like that could be, that is, you know, offset by the actual cost, the salary of this person. So I really, I mean, I'm a little bit less concerned about the dollar amount and more concerned, again, about that coordination piece and how do we make sure that we are, we're moving forward together with the community? Yeah.
And that was like, as Sopis mentioned, like, part of our strategic plan is that, is that, you know, connecting with all the other entities in our community that are doing that kind of social work and, like, social services, HOPE's Front Door, whatever, whatever different community organizations we have. And I, that's why I think, like, having someone who's here all the time can develop those relationships, can nurture those relationships that need that sort of special care to be developed and they take time to build on.
It does take a lot of time and because our social work interns have such limited hours, there's days when they have back-to-back-to-back-to-back appointments and they don't have any other time to even respond to emails or reach out to, you know, form a partnership with a local organization because they are just so busy meeting with patrons at the library. And so we really do need, you know, a full-time person to enhance those partnerships and to help, you know, develop supportive training for staff and assist with the monitors and et cetera.
Can you speak a little bit about confidentiality? I know it was brought up before. Because these are library patrons who are coming in often, who are identified by either monitors or by social workers or other library staff, like how, I know that Ian kind of touched on it a little bit, but with a full-time staff member, like, how will that confidentiality be carried through? Like, how will that look? I just want to make sure that we...
Yeah, so we do have a spreadsheet where the interns log all of their interactions and each patron is color-coded to a specific hex code color. There's no identifying information like name, age, or, you know, birthdate or anything like that. And so it's just logging what type of assistance they provided on that day. And so that's how we are able to get our stats, but it's all confidential and private.
I know that the current internship program has been wonderfully and graciously supported by the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation. And they have said, and with, I think, good reason, that they can't do that forever. It's not, it's both not their job and they don't have enough money to do it, both. The foundation was designed to do things that weren't within the operating area and also perhaps piloting or seed money to try to start a new program. But they also have commitments and plans for that money in other places. I don't know, is it a valid question to ask? How much are they contributing now? Is that private information or is that, in other words, what would it cost if we were paying for the current program?
It actually depends on the level of the social work intern. So what they pay is $15 an hour. Now, how many hours the internship is, is based on what degree the specific student is pursuing. So we, they have generously offered to pay two. And it has been usually somewhere in the $20,000, $20,000 to $30,000 range each year for the two interns and now with our, with the site supervisor.
Twenty to $30,000?
Closer to $30,000 with the supervisor.
With the supervisor.
Closer to $30,000 for the year with the supervisor.
And we're talking about, see to the pants estimate of 60?
Yeah, so somewhere in there.
Roughly double.
And we would be able to continue to offer unpaid internships and with a paid, with a super, a social worker on staff, they would be able to be the supervisor of those interns. So we would not have to outsource that piece. So we have options. And even if the board does not choose to pursue the social work position on staff at this time, and if the foundation were to stop funding the stipends, we could still offer social work internships at the library where we would continue to have this turnover.
We would still need to fund the licensed clinical social worker, though, because I do not have a degree in social work. And in order for the social work interns to provide any sort of case management type of assistance, we would need to have someone with a social work degree supervising them.
And that's the current supervisor that we fund also part-time, or the foundation...
The foundation funds, yes.
Foundation funds that part-time.
And she gives us a very generous discount for the library. So we're very thankful.
Any other questions for Van?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Van.
All right. Well, if anyone feels comfortable making a motion in a second, we can go that route if there's any other discussion points anyone wants to bring up first. The budget's always a tough one to kind of get rolling, but...
I mean, I think the question about the year-end fund balance and the transfer, I mean, I leave that up to, I mean, you all are going to have to deal with the law of that, right? I mean, it's, I, you know, I think what Julie was saying, I mean, it's going, it's going downward. It's not, it's not going to reach that $1 million, you know, pie in the sky number that the board had put in place back in the day. But there is a difference between, you know, some of these different numbers in terms of what will be in that fund at the end of 2027. So that's, I mean, that's kind of like a, like a risk management discussion in terms of what the board is willing to accept as like, oh, yeah, we think that'll be fine. Especially, you know, given that we're going to be going through this additional planning process next year to know more about what that could look like in the future.
I think about, of course, when you said, you know, return on investment, I think that was, I appreciate you saying that because I think about being a five-star library and what makes us a five-star library? And what, what are the, all the innovative things that our library has done and how we are a leader in so many areas? Our staff gets asked to present at ILA, at ALA, our, in magazines and those, and it's these, these things that we do that other people maybe are, maybe are doing, but maybe not in our area yet. And those are the things that I think, maybe it's obvious how I would be voting. I mean, I have the worst poker face ever. But I appreciate you saying that because I think that was, whatever little seed of doubt I had, that made me change my mind because I think it is an investment, not just at the library, it thinks an investment in our community. So, yeah, I appreciate you saying that. Thank you.
As Swapna said, I think we've all been struggling as all of this has come up over the last few months between, kind of a, it's kind of a head versus heart argument in a And one that's, you know, as you all know, is kind of personal to me, anyway. With what we've heard tonight, I would move that we accept the budget as presented with the social worker.
I will second that. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Yes. To accept the budget, yeah, to accept the budget as presented with the social worker. And then now I'll open up the floor for additional discussion.
Well, now that we have a motion on the floor, it becomes kind of binary. We do it or we don't do it. We can amend that motion if we choose in some form, if there, and I'm not sure whether there's a middle ground or not, or adjust the timing of it if it, instead of, well, I'll say it, I'm not proposing it, I'm just saying it as a possibility and an option that we don't do it in this budget, but we seriously consider doing it in the next budget, for example, when we have a little more time to process and so forth. But then we run the risk of the foundation reducing its funding and we might end up with less than we have now, which is of concern to me because we've established the need and we've all kind of, one way or another, said that we understand there's a need here. And the idea of potentially reducing what we're doing is concerning to me.
Are we also voting on, I'm trying to find the page where the, like, actual motion thing is on, voting on the transfer?
4% levy.
Well, yeah, that. But are we also voting on the transfer not, or does that happen at a subsequent?
No. That will happen, that is a separate.
Okay.
I anticipate doing that October, November.
Just kidding. Okay.
Yeah, so the vote on the floor is for the 4% levy with social worker.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Got it.
Or the motion, I should say.
Putting ourselves in a little bit of a box for them.
Correct.
We won't have as many options then if we were, I mean, no matter what we decide tonight, there'll be fewer options at that point, but...
It, to me, I think the case has been made that this is a necessity for the library if we want to have the kind of library that we say that we want to have. And so if the time comes when our operating costs are getting in the way of, like, long-term capital things, then that's a discussion that we should have. And we should look at all the operating costs and we should decide, well, what are we going to do about this and how are we going to deal with that situation? But I think, to me, once we've concluded that, and I think staff has done an amazing job of really explaining why this is important. When I first heard this, as I was coming on, I, my reaction was, I don't understand why a library would have a social worker. And you all have done a really amazing job making clear exactly why that is. So thank you all for doing that. So I think it's just as necessary as all the other things that we're doing. And we should do the things that are necessary to do to operate the library. And if the time comes when we have to figure out where, how we're going to deal with capital things, then we'll do that. And, yeah, that's all I have to say.
And I'll, I think, repeat what I said last meeting, which was, you know, if we look at the cost to the taxpayer, the 4% levy, I mean, that's, it's a, like, 55 cent difference to the average household.
Speak to the library.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I can't tell when I'm not. So I was saying, it's a bust, at the last meeting, you know, the current, the levy that we're discussing right now results in a very slight decrease to the average taxpayer in terms of how much, how much of their tax bill is paid to the library. And in how many cases in our lives can we say that we're, you know, paying basically the same amount for so much more, including now potentially a social worker? That's, we don't get to hear that a lot in our daily lives, like, oh, look, our money is going farther. And again, kudos to the staff for laying out these budgets so thoroughly and for talking us through kind of how, how and whether this will benefit the library, the community, the staff a lot.
And the reason we can do that at all is partly through our efforts in making it a five-star library, which means Downers Grove is an attractive place to live, visit, and work. And the equalized assessed valuation of the community rises. In other words, everybody's house is worth a little more. And they build a new hotel or a new commercial building or some new houses or something and there's more people paying in. So we get more for our buck. And it's good to understand that part also. That's the reason the rate can go down. And actually, the dollar amount you're talking about, we're talking about the dollar amount of the tax bill, our library tax bill, is potentially going down a little bit this year. And I have to be honest and say, this year. Seven or eight years ago, the library board, and I hate to say this, but that I was part of at that time, made a decision that as they created this reserve fund, I call it a reserve fund, the capital replacement fund, using the money that we no longer had to keep to pay salaries and bills and so forth for the first five months of the year by this intergovernmental agreement with the village. And if anybody needs that explained, I can do that offline. But in order to start this plan of, a planned equipment, capital equipment replacement in a valid financial planner way, was going to require an 11% increase the first year. And I must admit that I and all the rest of the board members kind of recoiled at that concept. And so the decision was made then, I think, to smooth it, instead of a big jump at first and then a drop, we were going to smooth it off during the years. And that worked for a while because the inflation was relatively low and the... And that worked for a while because the inflation was relatively low and the, we were able to make a significant transfer each year into that fund, which kept it alive and so forth. So that, that was probably a good decision back there. Looking back now, if we'd taken that 11% bump initially, we might not be here talking about this right now, but, but then we would have been paying more in all those other years. So that's, I don't know why we're this taking my discussion, but it's just perspective, I think. And the board eleven, you know, many years ago, made a, I think, a valid decision to do that. But now we're going to be, next year, beginning another capital replacement fund study to look at all of the things we need to do in the next seven years and what they're going to cost and how much it's going to cost each year to build the fund up to make that happen. And it might be more than four percent some year. But it's still, it's still a valid planning algorithm, so. But the dollar amount is small here, what we're talking about. I think you were kind of making that, that point. We're talking about this year, 40,000 dollars, maybe next year, and ongoing in the range of 60. That dollar amount, considering the return to the community, is rather small in my view. And I'm trying to balance that against the fiduciary responsibility I have as a representative of the taxpayers and, and the community. And it's, it's very difficult for me. I've leaned both ways. At the moment, I'm leaning that it's an awfully attractive proposal for the community. Somebody else has tried here.
I would propose that we move forward with a vote. And again, I mean, if it doesn't pass, then we, we're back to the drawing board and we'll, we'll work on a different proposal or a different motion. So Caitlin, unless there's any other last minute, last comments, we'll go ahead and proceed to the vote.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Fladak?
Yes.
Trustee Toppick?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
All right, we have passed the 2025 budget and levy at four percent with the social worker. Thanks again for Julie and everyone for all your presentations to help us sort through all of that. All right, our next item is Board Operations Analysis by Karissa.
All right, I had to move down here because I wanted to control my own clicker. So as many of you know, as part of my, this is on, right? I can kind of, okay. As part of my 2024 board trustee goals, one of the, whoop, I wanted to take a deeper look at some of the things we take for granted here as, as the way we do things here at the Downers Grove Public Library and compare them how to other, how other boards operate. And because this is potentially my last meeting, I wanted to share what I learned, celebrate some of the ways in which DGPL is a leader and make a few recommendations for improvements and further exploration. So I spent some time earlier this year tracking down data from libraries' websites and from the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, that IFLAR that we've been referring to over the last few months, and compiling them into a big spreadsheet. That spreadsheet, I believe, is linked through the agenda, it's, it's open to anyone, it's all public data. So some of the, the data is pretty straightforward and quantitative, so it's things like, what was the last reported budget or how many years do trustees serve? And some of it was more observational, like, do they have meeting recordings, how many public comments did they have, and so on. So I did this over about a four-month period earlier this spring. So, you know, having said that, you know, I wrapped up in, in June-ish, so there, it's possible some of the stuff you'll see in the spreadsheet in here are slightly outdated, but, you know, it is what it is. All of this data, as I mentioned, is publicly available, so if any of you all are, are so compelled, you can check my work by going to all of these different 64 libraries' websites and, and finding all of that information for yourselves. Or updating it because, you know, of course, I think, I think it's valuable and I think it's interesting to see how that stuff changes over time, too. And of course, there's hundreds of libraries in Illinois, so I chose to focus on the ones that might provide the more meaningful comparisons. So the spreadsheet includes data from 64 libraries, including our own in the Chicago suburbs. They do range quite a bit in terms of budget and service areas, so like how big their, their community is. But for the most part, I, I think we consider them peers in terms of, you know, our fellow libraries in the area. So, board composition in terms, the first thing I looked at, the big asterisk here is to note that a lot of these things are not things that the board or even the library have, can really do anything about. If, for example, if we wanted to add another trustee, you would have to go through village council and an, an additional process. But I did think it was interesting to kind of see how we compare to other, again, to our peer libraries. So as we know, the appointed model, the idea that, you know, the, the mayor and the council appoints those of us who sit on the board is, is pretty rare. Only 14% or eight other libraries in this group are appointed in, in that same way.
I think your word, they might be switched. Is that in your?
Oh, sorry, I totally, oh my God. Anyway, it, take my word, it is the opposite, yes. So the big slice, the big slice are, are the elected folks and the small slice are the appointed and we are in that green slice of those, of those nine total libraries. Again, this is not something we have control over and if I understand it from the correspondence that has happened, you know, with the village over the last several months, it, it definitely will take a substantial effort to change that model. Another thing that I found interesting in terms of terms, and this, you know, now, now this pie chart is slightly different because we voted on this tonight, but the majority of libraries do have a four-year term, as we mentioned today. A lot, the reason for that is, is to find and recruit folks that can actually commit to it because six years is a long time. So that's just kind of interesting to see as well, and that is something we can change and do change. And then the final thing that I found really interesting, and I, I'm pretty sure this is correct, again, you know, you all can look at the library websites like I did, I think we're the only library with six trustees. Most are either seven or nine. So like 80% of other libraries have, have seven trustees and a few more have nine. So we're, we're, it's interesting, we are unique in that way. So we're, we're smaller than most and we have this even number, which is, which is awful. Okay, so now on to something that I, I think that we have, we hold ourselves to a higher standard and for good reason, this idea of transparency in board documentation. So all libraries, as you may know, are required to post agendas and meetings as per the Open Meetings Act. But that doesn't mean they're necessarily super accessible or they're easy to follow or they contain a lot of detail. That's kind of up to the libraries themselves. So I'm really proud that the, DGPL has made an intentional commitment to that transparency because it definitely makes us a leader in this space. So let me show some comparisons. So only 28% of other libraries record their meetings in either, you know, visual or audio form and make them available on their website. So I thought that was really interesting. I mean, I think we kind of take that for granted and I think it's great that we do have it because it's useful to go back to often as a trustee and maybe for the public as well. So I thought, I found that really interesting. So we are, we are in that 28%. We're also in the minority of libraries who post their full board packets on their website. So that's not to say they might not hand them out like literally at their board meetings, that is certainly a possibility. I did not attend 64 different board meetings. Don't have that kind of time on my hands. But again, all of them publish their agendas and their meeting minutes, but they, but 60% choose not to put their board packets online, which I found really interesting. Yeah, and, and of those who do provide minutes, they don't have nearly as much detail as ours. I found one, one library who, who I will not name, that for their public comment section just said, "Public comment was made." So that, okay, that's, that's good to know, but there was no, you know, who, who they were, what they discussed. And, and even for board votes, they would list the votes, you know, i's and n's and things like that, but they wouldn't necessarily record the discussions that they had. And so that made me really appreciate, you know, even though they are multi, you know, sometimes hundreds of pages of documentation, it has been really useful for me to go back and see some of that, you know, to remind myself of what happened in past meetings or even to look at trends and patterns over the, you know, over the years that we have these documents available to us. No other library that I have found, and again, if, if I, if that's, if someone finds information to contradict this, great, that publish FOIA requests, and we know all their libraries give FOIA requests, but we're the only one that I found that publishes them. No other library that publishes incident reports, again, probably all of them track them like we do, but I've not seen any others publicly available. And that I mentioned at the last meeting, I've not seen too many other libraries really doing that, you know, really great job of providing updates on their strategic plan process. I think that those changes that are made in the, in the last few months even have been really impressive and I really am glad to see that. Having looked at dozens of these packets, I'd say that, you know, some of those changes are really, make us more competitive with those other five-star libraries. Arlington Heights is often cited among our peers as being the gold standard for, for board packets and it is impressive. And I think we're now, I think we're now kind of in competition with them for, for having a great board packet as well. And, and it really is. If you go look, I've actually assembled, if you, if you all have time, I have a, a folder with representative samples of agendas and board packets from all the, all these libraries too, so you can kind of get a sense of like what's out there. And finally, as much as, as much as you may have heard us complain or that we complain about financial reporting and the way that they're presented as they're, as they come from UNIS, the city system, nearly all of our peers present their financials in the exact same format. I mean, that, that I hold, the whole idea of, you know, the percentage through the year, which is challenging sometimes for, for our budget because, you know, even as Julie mentioned today, our, our insurance premiums come due at a certain time, so it skews the percentages because of course we're going to pay a bunch of money this month and so that number's going to go up. It doesn't, it's, we don't have a, a uniform spending rate and probably no other libraries do either. So I think financial reporting is an area of leadership opportunity and I did find a few examples that are doing, of libraries that are doing things a little bit differently and I will mention more about that at the end. Boarding, board meeting operations. So I tracked some of this just purely out of curiosity because as a board member, we spend a lot of time in meetings and it's, I was curious to see, is the way we do things typical among libraries or are we unique or unusual in some way? So these are not necessarily things that we need to change, I just, I thought I'd reflect on that because there's a lot of useful information out there. So with only a couple of exceptions, most boards meet in their home libraries, in a like a conference room or a large meeting room like we used to meet at the library. The setup typically has a trustee's kind of, you know, in a U shape or V shape at the front. Sometimes they actually meet around like a, a conference table, like a, you know, an eight-person conference table with the, with the visitors along the side of the room, which is fascinating. We're really fortunate, of course, now to have this as our home for library board meetings. It's very fancy and the seats are very comfy, so I hope they're comfy out there, too. So it's, it's exciting that we have this opportunity here. For public comment protocols, the, the five other library board meetings I attended at different libraries, and Marty, maybe you can chime in on this too because I know you attended some as well. Every one of them I attended required visitors, like, so you all have to sign in. There was a sign-in sheet, you put your name and, you know, contact information and then like marked whether you wanted to speak or not because of course not everyone speaks when they, they attend. And I found that really interesting. I don't think it's necessarily feasible or desirable in our case, but I, I did, you know, it was one area that was like noticeably different from what we, what we do here. On a related note, not, several other boards have established these public comment protocols, kind of like, like Swakna Reeves at the beginning of our meetings. Most of those protocols are, you know, they're similar to ours where it establishes that, you know, way of keeping meetings running smoothly and establish, you know, respect amongst the, you know, the, the public and the board members and establish the board president as the, as the arbiter of those rules. And finally, I thought, this is a general observation about formality, so this really runs the gamut. Yeah, Marty, if you, you've attended some of these meetings, it's really interesting. There are some who run their meetings super formally, like if you, like they do not deviate from Robert's rules, there's no chit-chat, it's just like boom, 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 and it's done. And there's some that are just like, hey, how's it going, Bob, yeah, did you bring some doughnuts today? I mean, it's like, they still follow rules, I mean, there's still like a Robert's rules in place, but it's, it's definitely more an informal version of that. So I just thought that was really interesting to reflect on and kind of reflect on how, how we operate and how that's changed over time, too. Few things about board meeting efficiency. So a couple of things stand out here. The first one is the length of meetings. So most of their board meetings.
I don't know if I want to know this.
Wait for it. Less than an hour. The one I went to in Bowling Brook a few months ago lasted 25 minutes. 25 minutes. And I thought they were like, you know, like showing off because I was there because I had to sign the thing and say where I was from. And they're like, no, 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 this is, I was like, holy cow. So I was looking and so, whoops, that didn't work out the way I wanted to, okay, we're saving this. Our meetings are on average two times longer than most other board, lot of board meetings. I looked at, you know, I kind of looked at the average of our meetings, it's about 113 minutes, so just under two hours, and that does not include executive session. So, you know, to take that for what it's worth, that means, you know, we're, and it didn't actually seem to reflect either, you know, I mentioned the degrees of formality, like the chummy people weren't necessarily taking a lot longer than the people that were, you know, chop, chop, chop with Robert's rules. So we just take longer. So a few reasons for that and that's the other three points here. So that's because shocking, 58% of our peer library boards had one or fewer public comments in the last 12 months, which, and not all, there were definitely some that, that had a lot of participation like we do, absolutely. But 58% had one or fewer in the last 12 months. I will say though, as I've said in the past, although it can be challenging at times, I do appreciate the level of engagement that our community shows and by, and demonstrates by keeping abreast of the library business and sharing your thoughts with us at this meeting. I, the rule we adopted last year about time limits, about how, you know, is about as far as we can and should go in terms of streamlining public comments. So I think, you know, for the foreseeable future, you know, with the public comment of the, public comments portion of the agenda is going to be the wild card for us and that's, it is what it is. Couple other factors, 52% of the majority of our peer libraries use consent agendas. So a consent agenda is a practice used to streamline the approval of like routine, non-controversial items, so like past meeting minutes, potentially financial reports, other types of, of more routine items. And those items are grouped together in a consent agenda and then the board votes on them altogether. The board can also say, or, you know, a board member can also say, oh, I want to take that one out so we have more discussion about it, and then they vote on the rest of the items separately. So that is, you know, it's, it's a, it's a procedure that's in place, I think, even for our own village council and it was something that came up a lot and might be a reason that some of these meetings are a little bit shorter, maybe not a ton shorter, but a little bit shorter because of it. Final, final thing, 78% of our peers use committees for different things like finances or buildings and grounds, strategic planning. Here, you know, again, I'll go back to the, one of the first slides, we do have a very small board relative to our other, to our peers, so I don't know if it makes sense in this case, but it was, it was something that was kind of out there that I found interesting and something that we haven't, I think, in, in my tenure had never really, you know, thought about doing or had, had put in place. Yeah. So that was a lot of stuff. I know I talk really fast, but I just had a couple of recommendations, suggestions, and then, you know, if we have the energy for it, we can discuss or I might just, you know, leave you all with this and walk out the door.
Mic drop.
I, I will say in all honesty, though, like, because I did, I was working on this several months ago, I started working on this, none of these things are things I, I mean, I, I would have made these recommendations whether I was staying or not, so I, I don't want you to feel like, oh, this, you got, like, here you go. So for the first thing, I mean, I think a simple thing would be looking at adopting a consent agenda, whether that makes sense for us. I, I don't think it would trim an hour off our board meeting, but, you know, 10, 15 minutes, it could get us home a little bit earlier.
Because really, like, with a consent agenda, for us, it would really just be minutes and like invoices and, you know.
Potentially, yeah.
And that's really it, which really doesn't, it's not a lot of discussion generally for us.
Yeah, generally. Although it's also thinking of things like, and I'm going to forget the specific name of it, but when we vote to do, every year to, to make sure that we're getting the money from the state.
Oh, the grant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the grant, sorry, thank you. I mean, I don't really have much discussion about that, just a thought.
Yes.
You know, one of those things, I was like, oh, well, it might be interesting to look at. The other thing, again, this may or may not be appropriate depending on how few future plans go forward, but even maybe for the library director evaluation, we talked about that before, forming a committee to kind of reduce the amount of time that's spent with that discussion in this meeting. I mean, it does then mean board members' time outside of this meeting, but it's a little bit different, I think, differently spent. And then, you know, this one, unsurprisingly, looking at different libraries' financial reports, the three that stood out to me, and I don't remember if these were part, if we looked at these specifically a couple of years ago when Jenny, you had shared some of these examples, and maybe they've changed since then, too, I don't know. But Arlington Heights, of course, Cook Memorial Library in Libertyville and McHenry have, have slightly different reports where they report on variances between the estimated and the actual amount spent rather than the percentage through the year. And I think- And I think the new, you know, the comparison between this year and last year, Caitlin, that got put into what, this month, right? Okay, recently. I think that is helpful, and it's, for, you know, for me, as a board member, it's easier to kind of make sense of than the percentage thing, because things vary so much. But I, I did appreciate these three specific library board packets to see, kind of like, okay, yeah, this does. It's a little bit easier to say, okay, well, here's what's unusual. We can still, we can see that in our current form, but it's a little, you have to kind of be in the know just a little bit more. And Julie provides that context usually, but it was, I did think this was, there are a couple of interesting examples out there, so. And finally, you know, with Matt just joining and another trustee probably on their way, it's probably worth the refresher on Robert's, Robert's rules. I remember my first year, I had attended some workshop about Robert's rules, it was very helpful. And I don't remember everything from, from that session. And yeah, you can read a book about it or read, you know, read documentation, but it's a little bit different when you hear examples and you hear from other boards, and you kind of understand how it works, like on the ground. I didn't fully understand that, I think, for a little bit, but, you know, into my tenure as a board member. So, and of course, I think, you know, again, we should continue the leadership we've established, this board transparency and documentation. It is a place that we really stand out. I, I don't disagree with the suggestion made earlier about separating out incident reports and putting them on the transparency page, and/or the, where, where we keep our board, I have to, I'd have to look to see on the website, but where we keep our board packets is under like board members or something? And so like, just even changing the language of that to say like, "Board stuff," or, you know. And I've seen language in other, on other libraries' websites that just make it a little bit more clear, like, here are the things related to board governance, leadership, all that stuff. So, and that's, you know, might be just like a word change on our website that might help us, and then, you know, the members of the public to find what they're looking for more easily, because we, you know, we have all this great information, we want to put it out there and make it accessible. So, that is it. That's all I have to say about board stuff.
A question.
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, when we started the bylaws revision process, right, when I was coming on board, we looked at a whole bunch of other bylaws. Did you revisit any of the bylaws stuff as you were doing this, to see whether they're actually being followed? Or was that kind of like, we've done ours and?
I did not. That would have been a whole other thing. Yeah, and it's funny, because I started doing some of this, and I started gathering, I got like all the way through, I got all this data, and then I was like, ooh, I should really go back and look at the board packets, and I was like, ooh, I should really go back and look. So I went back a couple of times to like get more, and did not get to the bylaws part. And so you have, you have the spreadsheet now, Marty, so if you would like.
She has passed the time.
I'm bylawed out of the moment, I was just curious about it, because I know there are some organizations that have them, and if you ask about them, they haven't looked at it in 10 years, and heaven knows if they're even being followed on either substantively or procedurally.
Yeah, and some of that would actually probably require actual contact with the board or leaders to get, make sense of that, because
We'll have to do that again in another couple of years anyway, so.
Well, I have to say, this is incredibly insightful, and I really appreciate it, and I think, you know, from my time when I first started on the board in 2017 to now, it looks completely different. How we run meetings, you know, the, the like, we certainly had way more laid-back, you know, kind of vibe going, and certainly didn't follow Robert's rules, you know, in terms of how we vote and everything. So, you know, we've kind of evolved to meet our own needs, and so it's nice to kind of have a pulse on like, are we in line with other libraries? And, you know, so it makes me feel good giving, like, hearing some of this feedback, and, you know, definitely really great suggestions, and kind of, you know, ways to keep improving and catering to what our community and what our situation is, so, super helpful.
Just a couple of comments, for those of you out there, now you know why we're going to miss her so much.
That's quite a swan song.
Wow. Just a couple of comments, Illinois library law is amazingly complicated. I mean, this is it here. And I guess the short version is, there are basically two kinds of libraries in Illinois. There are municipal libraries, and there are district libraries. Municipal library has, is coterminous with the village limits, you know, the taxing boundaries. A library district can be a village, but it is more likely a combination of villages or dating back to a bunch of farms that got together and
Or townships.
Or, or maybe it was a township or something like that. But the point is, the laws for district libraries are very different than the laws for municipal libraries. There are also different kinds of municipal libraries. For example, Downers Grove has the commission form of government, where we have seven commissioners, or six commissioners and a mayor elected at large. Westmont, on the other hand, has aldermen, who are elected by districts within the village, within their, their village. Those are two different kinds of government. Westmont has an elected library board under Illinois library law. Downers Grove, because we have the commission form of government, I'm not explaining, I'm not justifying it, I'm just saying that's what the book says, has an appointed library board, appointed by the village council, for, and has, consists of six people with six-year terms. And then there's another paragraph that says, by resolution, the board can change that term from six years to four years, like we just did tonight. But we can't, we can't have seven members, we can't have five members, we have to have six members, it says here. So it's, it's very informative to see how we compare to other libraries, but you also need to understand, and Carissa understands this, that just because they have seven members, why can't we have seven members? Well, this is we can. But it's, it's still illuminating to, to see how, especially how other groups run their meetings, because that is one thing that this doesn't talk a great deal about. And a consent agenda, for example, is an excellent idea. You see it in our own village council every, every week or three times a month. It does assume that each council member has received all the details of the stuff in the consent agenda in advance of the meeting, and if they've had any questions about it, that they ask them before the meeting. It also means that any member of the council can say, I'd like to remove this item from the consent agenda and discuss it separately. So a consent agenda isn't limiting, it's just a streamlining. But thank you. Wow.
Anyone else?
Thank you, that's all I have to say. That was a lot of work, that was super impressive. And that was like Carissa in a, like, if someone didn't know you, and you're like, what's she like, it'd be like, here.
What's she like?
This is like, I don't know if I'm flattered or insulted.
Let's clarify.
You should nerd out on them.
Thank you.
No, this is, I mean, it's a great launching pad to like, have, like, have further discussions of like, okay, let's continue to tweak, and also stay within like what's, you know, common practice and what's, you know, cater to what we need, so.
Yeah, it's just good to kind of like get out of
Yeah.
And we can have some further conversations with you without violating OMA.
The IBLAR, I also would say to give a plug to the IBLAR data, it is, they're, the site that's through IMLS is awesome, and you can do a bunch of stuff with it. I'll just put that, I'll put that up, it's fun, it's fun stuff, like, comparing like number of programs, number, like budget spent per book, per person. It's all kinds of fun.
Friday night.
Right, I know. It is, it's really good stuff, and over like a long period of time.
Somebody actually looks at that report we file every year with
And they compile it, and they put it in one place, and you can slice it dice, and you can look at libraries.
We submit a very detailed report that says how many people it took to screw in this light bulb this day on this month.
And I have to say, I had the same reaction to the meetings that I went to, every one of them. When they were over, it was still light out, and I went, what?
Yeah.
All right, thank you again, Carissa. We do not have any items for the executive session, so I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:46.